Has Kevin plugged in yet?
Huh?
Have they got Kevin plugged in yet?
Yeah, I think he's already said that he heard us. Man, it got quiet fast. All right. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Larry, do you want to lead us?
Sure. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. All right. Roll call, we are all here. Kevin is on the phone. Kevin, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. All right. For the approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to our communications. We could have... Here with me just a minute. Let's do the NEA first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've got four students to recognize. And today, I'm gonna... Unfortunately, the Rogers teacher had a family emergency, so she wasn't able to be here. But she said lots of wonderful things. So if I can have Blake come up? And it's Blake. Blake is a perfect example of what it means to be a Rogers Bear. I have known Blake for the past few years, and every year, he continues to grow into a wonderful student and an overall person. Blake works hard each day on everything he does. Whether it's academics or extracurricular activities, he always gives his best and has a positive attitude. He encourages others, always has a smile, and is always willing to help another student. Blake is a great friend to others. He is kind to everyone: students, teachers, assistants, peers, and parents. At Rogers, we have a kindness theme that we incorporate into our character lesson. This year, our motto is "Be the Kind Kid." Blake is the kind kid. He is a role model and wonderful example of character and hard work. He and his sister started the Buddy Bench at Rogers a few years ago for students who need a friend to play with at recess. I am so proud to call Blake one of my students, and I know he will do great things in his future. Congratulations, Blake.
I'm from Bernard Middle School, and I'd like to call Jared Hasty up. All right. The eighth grade team at Bernard Middle School would like to nominate Jared Hasty. He is a conscientious worker and shows determination and perseverance in everything he does. He is friendly and outgoing, and he is involved in many leadership activities, both in school and out. He is a member of both STUCO and NJHS at Bernard, a position that he has maintained all three years. Outside of school, he is a patrol leader for Boy Scouts and is currently close to achieving his Eagle Scout status. He is also an active member in church community projects such as picking up trash around our community, and he volunteers his time helping a church member take care of her various animals in his free time. We are truly honored to have Jared as one of our Bernard patriots.
Ben, you can come on up. Ben is a student that came to us last year from Trout Wine. He is currently a second-grade student at Beer Bomb, and I have had the wonderful privilege of working with him and being his IEP case manager for roughly a year and a half. When I first met Ben, he demonstrated great difficulty being able to regulate his emotions, especially when he became angry. He required high levels of adult support and specialized instruction in social skills. The reason I share this bit of history about Ben with you is because if you look at him today, you would never know any of this information unless he, his parents, or his IEP team shared it with you. Over the past year and a half, Ben has worked incredibly hard in my social skills groups, learning how to appropriately regulate his emotions and how to access his calming strategies. Due to his dedication, determination, and his want to be better, Ben has not had any difficulties controlling his anger in over a year. Furthermore, we have been able to cut his adult support in half, decrease the amount of social skills instruction he receives, and plan to make more of these adjustments in the coming months. This is a huge accomplishment. Ben has become a wonderful role model for my other students. I am so proud of Ben and continue to be amazed by his progress he is making. It has truly been an honor and privilege being his case manager and one of his teachers and being able to support him through the journey he's been on. Thank you.
Anna?
I have been very fortunate to have been Anna's teacher for the past two years at Beer Bomb as I've traveled from third to fourth grade. Anna is a student that we all secretly wish we could fill our classrooms with. Her smile brightens up the room every time she walks in, and she is a friend to everyone. She is a sweet and kind person who always tries her hardest and perseveres through adversity. As a leader in the classroom, she goes out of her way every single day to help her peers and her teacher. When Anna grows up, she wants to be a doctor. Doctors don't just need to be disciplined, which Anna definitely is. They also need to be caring and compassionate, which is Anna's strongest trait. She is going to make an outstanding doctor because she is an outstanding student and person, which is why I am so honored to be giving Anna this award. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. If we could move to Bernard Middle School.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. We have five different groups of kids that want to talk about the amazing things that they're doing at Bernard. And we are going to start with our Student Council. And we have both of our Student Council sponsors here: Audrey Rouse and Julie Dorson.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Moore, and I am president of Student Council at Bernard Middle School. This is my fellow vice president, Leila. And we are here to explain the activities STUCO does and participates in. First thing every year we do is, on the first day of school, is we start with a greeting squad. On the first day of school, we have our Student Council members stand out in the entrance of our school with signs that say "Got a Question? Ask Me." We do this so that the new students can have... feel more ease about their first day of school.
Our next big event of the year is our Patriot Day barbecue. We have held a barbecue for the last seven years. We honor our first responders, active military, and veterans. We do fundraising throughout the year to help us support the barbecue and also receive some donations of food from the community businesses. Our fundraising also goes towards paying for all STUCO members to go for districts and state meetings to become better leaders.
This year, our district is at Timberland High School. Our council is running for second vice president. If we win, we will help plan the middle school leadership events in the next year's districts. Next week, we will have the honor of showcasing our school to a very important lady named Terri Johnson. Terri is the Missouri Association of Student Council's executive director. It will honor to have our school and show her the great things we do.
In addition to all these activities our council makes, sandwiches for the St. Vincent de Paul Society to feed the homeless, collect canned food for the Elks Club, plan Spirit Weeks, help promote Red Ribbon Week, and hold mixers to promote the school unity.
Thank you.
Our next group is Mike Shira, Officer Mike Shira, and the Teen Academy.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Shira, and I'm the School Resource Officer for Bernard Middle School. And I wanted to talk to you just for a moment about the Teen Police Academy that I host once a year through the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades at Bernard Middle School. It's generally six weeks, five to six weeks long, one hour a week, generally after school, one day a week. And they get to experience different aspects of what the police department has: the different units, different police officers, detectives, and special operations units to see exactly what we do for the community. Now, the main goal behind the Teen Police Academy is to strengthen, I believe, which I enjoy doing, strengthening the relationship between the police and the youth of the community. They get to see us in a different light. It's not work, work, work what they see on TV. We get to explain what we're doing, and they get to see those things firsthand and to experience that through different units. Last week, we had the K-9 unit come out and give demonstrations, and they got to actually meet the officer with his K-9 partner. The other week, we had the helicopter unit. They got to meet the pilots. The helicopter landed on the field. They also got to meet the bomb and arson unit and see some of their robots that they use to utilize their tools for work: defusing bombs. We didn't bring any bombs. Let's... yeah, good, right. We also have the tactical unit, which is also known as SWAT, and they get to see the tactical van. Actually, it's a big truck with a ladder and everything, and they get to try on their vests and their equipment and to actually, you know, a little Q&amp;A session between the officers in a very relaxed, laid-back setting. And like I said before, it's a good opportunity for the students to see us in a different light. I see them every day, but this is a chance for them to meet other officers and detectives and special operations to see how they are as people and to strengthen that bond. Any questions?
That's very cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Officer Shira. Our next group is Gina Figler, our Bernard librarian and Book Battle Club.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mia Adams, and I am an eighth grader at Bernard Middle School. I am a member of Student Council, Social Club, Drama Club, Band, and I am the president of National Junior Honor Society. But my favorite club is Book Battle. I have been in this club since I was in sixth grade. Twenty books are selected for us to read, and teams from multiple middle schools come out to compete in a trivia-like competition. Our best finish was in fourth place, so far. Ms. Figler, our librarian, is the best sponsor anyone can have, and for that, I can't thank her enough. As you can see, Bernard gives us students so many amazing activities that we can become involved in. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have our First Lego League sponsors, Mrs. Gabatz and Mrs. May.
Hello there, I am Cat Buckles.
And I am Kevin Bus. We're part of the Patribots, which is Bernard's Middle School Lego League team. In Lego League, we build robots out of Legos. We program the robots to complete missions on a board. We spend most of our time solving problems, like how we design the robot and write the programs to complete the mission. This is our robot, Carl, who stands for Cool Assistant Robot of the League.
The other part of First Lego League is a project to solve a real world problem. For the project, we had to research about how to keep astronauts happy and healthy in space. Our team decided that we wanted to focus on helping astronauts sleep well, so now we are working on creating our solution. We will design our solution and present it at the First Lego League competition on December 9th. Thank you.
They just love being involved, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Beasley Elementary.
Good evening. We are going to be highlighting our homeworks program this evening. And we have two site coordinators, Ben McCleskey and Suzie Bertley, who are going to be talking to you a little bit about it. I also want to introduce the founder and CEO of Homeworks, Karen Kalish. And we have lots of wonderful staff here this evening, as well as parents and students. So we'll let all of them stand up at the end, and we'll say thanks to them also because all of this could not take place without all of their hard work. Some of them are going to be coming up and speaking as well about their experience. So here's Ben and Suzie.
Good evening. Ms. Bertley is going to pass around a bag that we take on our visits to show you some of the materials that we share with families. First up, we had our recent staff meeting with Dr. Gaines, and he noted that students only spend about 14% of their life in a given year at school. So we... The Beasley Homeworks program operates from an understanding that parents are the first teachers of our children and that having a strong relationship with families is essential for having a successful education. We did prepare a slideshow. If we can get that started. But, so basically, our homeworks program has three facets. One is our training. Of course, I should probably start it myself. So here are some of the main points of our program. So the main goal is to strengthen our relationship with families, to get a real personal glimpse into what students' interests are and what their life is like outside of school. And no matter how much we ask students to write about or share with us at school what life is like, there's no substitute for being there in the environment to see, oh, look at all these instruments they have or the kind of books they're reading or the toys they play with. So what we do, we start with... Our staff was trained at the beginning of the school year to learn how to do effective home visits. We then had a family dinner where we invited all of the families at school to come and learn about the program, enjoy a meal, socialize with the teachers, and then share some other information about things that were going on in school. We had over 240 participants, about 70 families showing up for our dinner. And all of the feedback we received was positive from teachers and families. So the home visits include two staff members going on a visit, usually the classroom teacher or someone who is very familiar with the student's academic progress, and then a co-visitor. So currently, I think we have about 24 teachers and staff that have been trained in the program that are participating on these visits. We try to squeeze as much as we can into 30 minutes. Our... the first step is asking the parents to brag on their kids, asking what their goals are for their student's education, getting an idea of what their interests are, and then talking about the kind of things that are going on in school that you can't capture in a 15-minute conference. The feedback has been very positive from the families that they really enjoy having a relaxed time with their teacher in a more comfortable setting. And the feedback from the staff also has been really positive because it gives us a chance to see kids in a whole new light, to discover that grandparents live right next door or other extended family members are a couple houses over. And so it gives us a richer picture of what our students' lives are like.
If our parents are going to speak, come on up. We have three parents that are going to just tell you very quickly about their experience. So the first, I'll let them introduce themselves as they come up.
Hey, good evening. My name is Ryan Owens. I am the father of Oliver Owens, currently in first grade at Beasley Elementary. So, full disclosure, this program kind of freaked us out. Having parents over to the house kind of felt like an undercover mission to find out if we were doing what we're supposed to be doing. But quickly, we've realized that this is actually bridging the relationship between education and family. I was telling the founder, which I surprisingly sat next to earlier, how much of an impact this program... And I can't believe finding out just recently, this is only its first year. The program has done such amazing things for my son. Last year, he had an issue with reading. Now he's reading eBooks. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but he's reading all his own Level eBooks, and he's excited, he's thrilled. The change that we've seen in him and the program with these teachers coming over... And like I said again, I just have to reiterate, they are bridging the education system with the at-home situation. And it's just, it's very comforting to see them in this environment. I think it's made my son personally very comfortable in the education system as well. So I don't know if I have to advocate for this or not. I don't know if that's the purpose of me being here, but I definitely am a full supporter of this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ashley Caldwell. And if you can't tell by my voice, I talk a lot. So I'm gonna keep this real quick and simple. I, of course, am a recruiter for the Missouri National Guard. And it's tough being a single military parent and with the teachers coming to the house and, you know, seeing how I run my home and the difference between the way my son behaves at home and the way he behaves at school. They said it was totally night and day, and I don't know why. But it gave them an opportunity to figure out what helps my son. The past couple of months, he's been going through some things. We're working on that now. But the home visit kind of gave them an insight of, hey, this is how Terrence operates at home, and maybe we can try this. So I'm not gonna do my whole big spiel because I could be up here for about an hour, and I'm pretty sure you guys want to go home. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aldina. My son, Arson, he started kindergarten this year. He is... has a chromosome 16 deletion, and he has some learning disability issues. And I cannot thank the teachers and everybody for accepting him this year. And this program was a wonderful, wonderful thing. He had like trust issues and, you know, dropping him off in the morning. And I just cannot thank, you know, the teachers, the principal, everybody. You know, this is just a wonderful, wonderful thing for him to start. I can already see a lot of improvements in him trying to start writing and, you know, the ABCs. I mean, this is just a wonderful program. And thank you, everybody, for tonight.
Thank you.
All right. And we have a previous Beasley student, Alex Ludwig, who's going to come up. And he volunteered at our family dinner. So he just wants to give you his kind of view and insight.
Hi, like she said, I'm Alex, and I volunteered at the dinner about a month ago. And I thought that it was such a good thing that they were still like reaching out to families because when I went there, we had family movie night or other events and everything. And it was just... It was nice to see that there's still things like that out in the world.
And this is one of our fourth-grade students, Aiden Cash.
Hi, my name is Aiden Cash. I had Ms. Hancock and Ms. Dressel come to my house for a home visit. It was really easy for my mom and dad because they didn't have to worry about being late. We only had to worry about keeping our house all clean. It was really neat for them to come over to our house because we talked about our grades and other stuff, like my reading grades and if I was struggling on a subject. My brother and I had fun because we got to show them our room and some cool things around the house. It was nice of them to give us a book and some learning games. We gave them some treats back. When they left, me and my family played a lot of the games, and I read my book. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone that spoke. Like I said, it takes everyone working together, really building that partnership. So everyone that's been involved in homeworks, if you could please stand up: the parents, the students, the staff. Everybody just stand up. And Mrs. Hancock, I want to especially recognize her. She completed 16 home visits. I tell her the "I won't take no for an answer" lady because she'll keep calling them and say, "Oh, I can meet you at football practice." "That's fine, I know you're busy." And she has done things like that. So all the staff has been great with the support of this. So thank you to everyone.
Okay. We will move on for open period of patron comments. We did not have anybody signed up. And next would be our Standing Committee reports. Who has had a committee meeting lately?
So the Finance Committee met last Wednesday, and I'm sure Marshall is going to go over most of what we talked about. The only thing I think I need to want to bring to the board is that the Finance Committee members are auditing the Prop R schedule, and they will be reporting that to us next month in December.
Great, thank you. Peggy, did you have anything?
We had a facilities meeting here at Melville High School, and they gave us a tour of all the new HVAC and the new lights in some of the classrooms and the gym floor, which is beautiful. And then we met and went over what the, you know, the schedule for what's going to happen in the future. And we talked about issues that we've talked about in meetings, baseball fields, things like that. And they were... they're still checking on pricing things out and giving us some bids on what different things will cost and so we can continue to project.
And they mentioned they did some small things with the baseball fields. Remember, they regraded?
Yeah.
They did some... they did a few things. I don't know the technical part, though. I don't remember it all.
Yeah, I've seen how it affected the baseball fields. It's not good. It now holds water all on the field now. So that's great. Okay. Larry, have you had anything?
We had a policy meeting. We got to work through 14 policies. Twelve we're going to advance for November for consideration. We've got two with some additional work needed. And we had one new policy handed out. We haven't had a chance to go through yet. We know that there's another big update coming based upon the two omnibus bills they passed in the legislature. We don't know if we'll see those this year or early next year.
Okay. All right. Jean, have you had anything? Same as Larry, okay. Yep. Peggy and Larry covered it, so. Okay, perfect. Kevin, have you had anything?
Those two have been at the same Finance Committee that Lisa was at, but my car battery died. But Marshall was kind enough to actually meet with me and go over everything. So like Lisa said, I'm not going to steal his thunder, but there was a lot of good things they went over. And I'm very appreciative that the Finance Committee is going to be auditing the Prop R promises again. That's really about it.
Okay. All right.
I had one more thing I wanted to mention.
I think we should all say a moment of silence for Christina Tinker, who was a 25-year teacher at Blades, and I believe she was also a teacher's assistant at Beasley. And I attended her wake last night. Lots of support from the district. So, really sad. So if everybody could just say a moment of silence.
Okay, Sam, I can't remember if anyone reported on the MSBA conference.
No.
Oh, well, I didn't, I didn't plan on saying.
You had it, no, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, see if everybody felt the same way, that we had some, you know, incredible breakout sessions there. And I personally found, you know, one or two of them particularly of interest. And that was the legislative report where our lobbyist, Mike Reed, spoke to us for a short time. And then another gentleman took over with his rendition of ideas for fully funding the school formula. The other one was a session on alternatives to MAP testing as we know it today. And several schools have joined in on this. And it was really interesting to see how that could work for us. So hopefully, we'll look into that at a later time.
Also that we got our Early Childhood, Mrs. Westbrook, she's not here tonight, I think, won an award.
For best early education program.
Best large, early education program in the state.
I was just gonna, and their presentation was amazing.
Yes, in comparison.
I mean, it was a standout. It was a standout. Like, and then, and you knew that, because when it came time for questions to come from the group, every single question was for
Melville.
Yeah. Was for us, so.
And also John Dewali and Scott Clark did a presentation on innovative learning.
One comment about the Early Childhood program. What we did was, rather than have individual presentations where people would show up with 40 slides and kind of go crazy in 10 minutes, we asked them each to do about a 12-minute video. And the quality from the three school districts was amazing.
It was.
And it told, it told a really good narrative of not just their teaching, but exactly what Beasley showed us, the importance of cooperation and relationships. So it was an amazing session.
Oh, and as a side note, we've won Outstanding Board of Education for the second year in a row.
All right. Okay, so we have two new faces with us that will be with us for the next year, which are our two student advisors. I am probably going to mess their names up, but we have Nora and Amara. Amra, see, it's gonna take a while. If you guys would like, if you would like to talk about your schools, what you do, what you're involved in.
I am Amra, and I am a junior here at Melville High School. A few clubs I'm involved in is National Honor Society, Connect, which is a program that we have where we mentor our freshman classes, and Junior Exec Board, where we plan different events for our juniors throughout the year.
Okay, so I'm Nora. I'm a junior at Oakville. I am a part of HOSA. Oh, that is for students who are hoping to be involved in the medical field in the future. I am an exec, so that's exciting. I'm also a part of our theater department. And we have a play coming up, so everyone should get tickets.
When is it?
It is the 14th, 15th, and 16th. So, yes. And I am also a part of National Honor Society.
Very nice. Well, we welcome you both. We look forward to having you guys over the next year. All right, we will move to our action items by consent. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we will move on to our student achievement for our ELL report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. So I'm gonna give a little snapshot comparison from last year to this year for our EL program. We have included and added over 300 more students this year from where we were this time last year in our EL program, K-12, which is exciting and challenging at the same time. And a little bit about how we're programming right now. In elementary, we are co-teaching in content areas throughout all the grade levels. A typical co-teaching and co-planning experience for a teacher may include an EL teacher working with up to seven different teachers in a building, and also working with small groups of students throughout the day. In our middle schools, EL teachers are also utilizing a co-teaching model, and that is being taught through English Language Arts classes. At the high school level, our EL teachers are co-teaching through ELA, and they're also co-teaching in various in contents, such as biology, government, and health. Teacher schedules continue to have to maintain some flexibility due to the additional time that sometimes is needed as students transfer to our district and newcomers enroll, so that they can conduct student and family interviews and the screening process that is in place now because of an ESA requirement. And then our EL teachers are also responsible for providing PD to staff all the way from their principals to classroom teachers to support students. The next slide is our elementary school EL enrollment data. Right now, we have 12 teachers, K through 5, and they are serving 934 students. And we have a ratio of about 78 to 1 in our elementary school setting. In our secondary schools, we have 774 students that are EL. And our ratio in that area is about 107 to 1. When we look at the district overall, our EL teacher-to-student ratio is about 89 to 1, and last year, we were at 77 to 1. So we definitely tell that increase in our student population this year. So right now in Melville, 6% of our EL students are immigrants, which means that they have been in the United States for less than three years. At Melville High School, that includes 25% of the EL students, 13% of students at OHS, and 10% of our EL students at Berkeley are in immigrant status right now. In addition, we also have ELs who were born in the US, and they have returned with their parents to live in their native country, and then returned back to the US with little to no English. So they have an interrupted education. So that's a different level of support that we'll provide to students that are experiencing that. And also, we are providing supports for EL students who attend Scope. And that includes students who are attending Scope from other school districts that are part of that consortium. And then last week, or in the last seven days, we've added, or we're in the process of adding six new students, and teachers are screening new students. So we are, it's a constant flux with our numbers. This is just a demographic sheet of various demographics across the district with all of our EL students and different pieces with every building. This slide represents the 52 native languages that our students and families speak that are part of Melville, K-12, and the numbers of students that speak those languages. And then we broke, I broke it down into just our percentage of students and the top languages that are spoken. And right now, Bosnian is still a great percentage, as well as Spanish and Vietnamese. When we look at our enrollment and our historical exit data, this year, all 281 of the MY1s who were in monitoring year 1 received a 4.7, which is the new score on the access to, to be exited, or they had a portfolio that allowed them to exit the program. Our EL teachers collect data on all of our ELs that are in MY1 and MY2, which is 346 students, twice a year for a two-year cycle. Students that are in AY3 and AY4, they are accountability years. And that's gonna be tied to the state assessment data when that comes out and averages an EL subgroup for adequate yearly progress. So when we look at screening, every potential EL that is identified through the language use survey when students enroll, if they're identified as a potentially EL, we are required to screen them within the first 30 days after they've enrolled in school. For our kindergarten students, the kindergarten WEDA access placement test, for those students, it takes about 40 minutes for that test to be administered to a single student. For students that are in grades 1st through 12, our online WEDA grade, sorry, our online screener for WEDA takes about 80 minutes to administer. And if a student's a newcomer, which means they've been in the country less than three months, that screener involves a lot of one-on-one interviews with the parents, the student, and the teacher. This slide shows the eligibility scores for students to receive English Language Development Services as a result of the changes brought on by ESA. So it shows grade levels, shows the ranges in which students would be eligible, as well as the ranges in which a student would not be eligible. So when students are screened, our teachers utilize this to determine whether or not they're able to receive services as an EL student in Melville. And the last slide here is about our access test, which is usually in January, so we're getting ready for that. Last year, WEDA changed their standard settings and moved the score from 5.0 to a 4.7 to 6.0 range. And so our EL teachers are administering the Language Proficiency Test in K-12 EL students who are receiving certain services in our school district. It's a tiered test. All ELs, it's, sorry, an EL's language development is tested through the content areas of math, science, social studies, and English Language Arts in all four modalities, which include speaking, listening, reading, and writing. If an EL student has a portfolio, it allows an EL teacher to provide evidence using classroom data in a modality if a student did not score well in one of the four areas on the access. So for example, if a student has accidentally stopped their recording when they're taking the access, when they're recording their voice speaking prompt, they can utilize content and academic data that the content and EL teacher have, that they've collected over time to show that a student is proficient in speaking, so that that test is not the only indicator that a student is proficient. So under ESA, now reclassification of ELs every year is a policy. And in addition, the state of Missouri has set language growth targets for our EL students at each grade level. And they're looking at, we're kind of focusing on, after five years in our program, we're kind of hoping to exit students out so that they have less long-term ELs, so that they're more successful in school. So I'm really proud of the work that the group's been doing. They have done an amazing job with professional development. Our teachers participated in co-teaching PD that we put on with UMSL and EdPlus. And we had over 60 people in Melville involved with that, which was awesome. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Bressler and Mrs. Schilling. They are both two of our teachers and key players in making everything work well in our program and the support that they give our students. So, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I do. I know Dragic handles our Bosnian students, but what happens if you get somebody from like Niger, Cardifanian? Who, how do we, how do you make that, have that first interview if they're newcomers?
Sometimes we have to use interpreter services. So we use different vendors in the county. Lamp and International Institute. And we have coordination with those areas to support us when we don't have the language ability in our, within our own staff.
And you mean there's interpreters in our, in our town that can interpret all of these languages?
Yes.
Holy cow.
Very fluently too, might I add.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I think your work is amazing, because that's, this is complicated. And so, kudos to everybody.
It's to all of the teachers. The teachers do a fantastic job.
Everybody involved.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I look, the numbers are staggering, in my opinion. And so, good job.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Okay, next we have our staffing and enrollment report.
Usually I do this sitting down, but I'm tired of sitting down. Just wanna stand up a bit. So the last few years, we've kind of used October as a time to take a look at what enrollment trends are and what the impacts are on staffing. So we keep track of our historical enrollment and what enrollment looks like, just in a number of spreadsheets. So here we've got our last 10 years of enrollment by grade level. These are the official September count numbers from DESI, although this year, we don't have that certified yet. So that could fluctuate a little bit. And then from that, we look at, you know, what's the average over that time period in each grade level? And then really, what's been happening a little bit more recently? And you can see that since, over the 10-year period depicted here, we're at about a 6.8% enrollment drop over that time period. So that's our trend. It looks to probably continue to be that way, depending on what model you use. And we'll see that a little bit later. So if we kind of then pull that and kind of looked at it a little bit differently in a bar graph, you can see, since about 2012, 2013, you can typically see a pretty good decline in each grade level. If we look at that just at this year, we can see what we thought was gonna happen. And that was, that great big class that last year was in 5th grade and moved into 6th grade. We kind of did some staffing moves to support that. But kindergarten class was much smaller than we anticipated. Now, the year before, it was a little bit bigger. So we don't know if last year's large class is having an impact on a smaller class this year, or if that's gonna be a trend that moves into the future. This is only the second time we've been below 700 kindergartners in decades. So a class this small is very much an anomaly for us. But you can see the trend, especially in elementary, is that, is that moving down. So we look over the last three years, and you look at, what, 6th grade now, in the green bar, you can see that they were bigger in 5th grade in 2017. So you can see what's happening with a cohort a little bit. You can see our kind of jumping around, what's happening in kindergarten the last few years. And you can see those bubble, bubble groups taking a move through. If we look at it then by grade configuration, you can see that from last year to this year, significant drop in elementary. So that 5th grade class last year was nearly 900 students. They walked out, and they were replaced by a group less than 700. So about a 200-student difference in elementary this year. And then with that bigger class going into middle school, we saw a bump up in middle school. But we can see down overall. So we use this then to take a look at what's happening within a cohort of students. So you can see the diagonal, so that's just the same group of kids as they move through. And you go, okay, there were 731 of them when they were in kindergarten, and now there's 819. They seem to be adding within that cohort. So what's happening there? Well, we do that calculation too, and I jumped forward. Too many. Trying to go back. One. Yeah, the one with all the red. So we can see what's happening within a group of kids as they move from year to year. And you can see, if we put in that same diagonal for that group that was in kindergarten, they've gained most years. But you can see, there's lots of red on there when the same cohort of students is actually going down. So all of that, overall, we can see what the historical average in the change from kindergarten to first grade is. to first grade is, and we can see what the historical change from sixth grade to seventh grade is. We can also look more closely at a three-year average. So we use that historical average and our kindergarten estimate to then project what we think enrollment might be moving out. The further we get out, the more inaccurate that we're going to be, because we're guessing at kindergarten. So here, we're guessing at kindergarten of seven hundred and thirty-three, but our three-year average is seven hundred and eleven. So if we change that to seven hundred and eleven, we see a different projection. But you can also see because that we're projecting the same kindergarten class, what we end up with is stability, because the model just produces the same numbers over and over again. So the further we get out, we decline, so that's why we update it annually. So that same model, if we look at it further out into the future in terms of grade configuration, we see that stability begin to happen out further into the future, but we know that's not going to be accurate. So we can look at what those numbers look like on a bar graph, and you go, oh, it looks like there's going to be some relative stability, but that's what the model will produce. But this is the model that our demographer had shared when he did the study, and he did a high, medium, and low, right? So what we kind of have planned around is to have that, have this information updated every three years, and to see where that trend is going. So as of right now, we anticipate that we would engage a demographer sometime after the September count is made next year. So about this time next year, we would engage the demographer, not for redistricting, just to update these projections, not only these, but at the building level as well. Now, if we take the demographer's projections and we insert what we're projecting as well as our actuals, the purple line is the actual, and you can see that last year we were right at the demographer's high projection, and this year we are right at the medium projection. And then you can see that higher blue line, that's if we project out at seven hundred and thirty-three kindergartners, and the orange line is at seven hundred and eleven. So you can see the difference that makes, but you can also see from the demographer is the further out you get, the further spread there is, just because it's harder to predict the further you go out, and if you make a small error early, by the time you get out there, that error is just expanded. So all of that leads into what are the impacts then on staffing? Well, if we look across all of our employee groups, we employ, you know, between thirteen and fourteen hundred folks. We do have a few unfilled jobs right now, so the, our thirteen sixty-three point five is a little bit low, and we have those folks employed in a number of areas across the district. So if we look in particular at teachers and we look at by building, we can see what we have in each of those buildings, our, and with a plan that we kind of unveiled last year, we're looking to try to move to one full-time librarian at each elementary school, and so that'll free up some resources in those buildings. You can also see what's been happening as that elementary enrollment has declined. We're using some of those rooms to expand early childhood, so now we're up to six satellite sites for early childhood and serving more students in that area. Now, if we look kind of overall at the number of just classroom teachers, so the number of kindergarten teachers at first grade, we can see what that's been over the last four years, and we can see what the enrollment in those grade levels have been over the last four years, and then we can see what's happening in class sizes overall in terms of each grade level over that time period, and what's been happening overall as a district as, in terms of class size. And you can see that it's gone down slightly, and it's gone down a little bit more in some areas than others. Part of that is an impact, if we look at grade level, of some of those bubble classes kind of going through there. We can also see that data in terms of the building level and what's happening there. And if we look at that level, we also project out what's going to happen. So we just make an assumption that if there's three sections of a grade level this year, there'll be three sections of that grade level next year, and how we move those forward. So right now, we have anywhere between thirty-three or to thirty-six sections per grade level across the district, and as we project forward, if things kind of remain the way they are now, we think that will all level out over the next five years at about thirty-three sections per grade level. So as we looked last year to this year, we showed you this data, and we showed that it looks like we would be reducing elementary staff. We did, that was done through attrition. It looks like we'll be doing that again next year if these numbers hold. Again, we can do that through attrition relatively easily. But what we see then with that kind of thirty-three sections per grade level, is it pretty much three sections per building except for two? That would be Beerbomb, which will let, we think will level out at four, and Mosaic, which is built for two, and the average of two and four is three. So it ends up about three classes per grade, three sections per grade level across the district, is where we think we'll eventually even out to if these numbers hold. Then we look at, move on to middle school and high school, and we can see staffing there. So if we look at Bernard Berkeley and Oakville Middle in particular, their enrollment is all pretty close together, so their staffing's about the same. Washington's a little smaller, and we can see the same at Melville and Oakville, some differences in staffing. Oakville's now a little bit bigger school. So early childhood then, we can see what, what we have going on there and where folks are. We, we actually have pairs there. As I mentioned before, we're continuing to expand as the elementary space opens up, but as we look at growth within the early childhood, consideration of additional administrator time in early childhood is something that we're going to have to consider into the future. If we look at guidance, we, we look at a couple of pieces and how they compare to what's, how, how they are relative to the state standard. So what is the F T E that we have? What does the state standard call for? And then what's the variance there? You know, are we above state standard? Are we below state standard? And, you know, in five of our schools, we're right at state standard, and five of our schools, we're a little bit above, and one, we're a little bit below. So we're pretty close on guidance at elementary. We leave, look then to the middle school and the high school, and the numbers would indicate that we're heavy relative to guidance in six through twelve. We can also look at what's our clerical across the district. So we've got about seventy-five. There's generally split up at about two per elementary, about two and a half for middle, and eleven for high school, and then we've got other secretaries around departments and programs that we have, as well as within central office. We also have a fairly large facility group. We've got about a hundred custodians. Ninety of those are set to schools, nine are kind of elsewhere, kind of floating. We've got just under thirty maintenance staff, and then we've got about five who we would consider kind of work out of the office with really three managers there and two clerical. And they manage and take care of about one point eight million square feet under roof, and then a lot of grounds as well. So they cover a lot of space. Then we've got transportation. We've got just about eighty-five drivers and about fifteen monitors, so about a hundred people that are on buses. We've got five mechanics right now, but we're looking for ones, if anybody, know anybody? We've been recruiting like crazy, that's been a hard one to fill, and then we've got about seven that we consider in the offices. So with that, out of two garage bays, we maintain about a hundred and seventy-three vehicles, about a hundred buses, and then we've got about seventy or so other vehicles kind of across with technology, maintenance, food service, a number of other drivers there, all of those vehicles. We also have other areas. We've got twenty-eight nurses and health aides serving nineteen buildings. We've got fifty cafeteria recess monitors, and we've got about a hundred food service workers across the district. So we've got lots and lots of folks that all add up to that roughly thirteen hundred and sixty-something. We also have principals. We can look at principals relative to state standards as well. So again, here, it's how many, what's our principal count in a building? What is the state standard for that building, and what is our variance from that building? Here, we can see that we're short administrators in elementary. That's not a new thing. At the secondary level, we can see that we're about, really kind of even across the way, but we don't consider, you know, athletic directors, kind of pseudo-administrators, so they're not included in that count, so that kind of changes that a little bit. At central office, the standard would call for seven assistant superintendents, and although we don't call them all assistant superintendents, we kind of actually now have all those seven positions over the last couple of years, so we, we've got that piece. So as we look across enrollment and we look at staffing, we really kind of have this notion of competing realities, and that is, we have an enrollment decline, which would lead us to believe that we need to be reducing staff in some regard, and we're, we're doing some of that, but we're also shifting that F T E based on enrollment. So we talked about the decline at the elementary, but we also had to staff up as more kids moved into middle school. So those are things that we have to play around with. We know we have staffing that's below state standard in some areas, especially within elementary principals, and we know we have to think about staffing to meet student needs. So, you know, we, we talk about this declining enrollment in the elementary, but we also, how can we lower class out? So we've been able to do that a little bit, but how can we do that a little bit more? You see the counselor F T E, and as a general rule, we're kind of above the counselor F T E, but we'll, pretty much everybody would tell you that we just don't have enough counselors to meet the mental health needs of today's students, or the need for behavioral specialists aren't really captured in all of that. And then there's really this notion of what, what should the staffing be for an organization our size? And we think about as that early childhood program grows, the need for administrator there, you know, most districts our size would have some sort of subject area coordinators. We'll look at the onerous nation, notion of state reporting and how that's grown. We report roughly sixty-two pieces of information on every student every other month. Actually, ten days ago was our great, big report, where we have to report on all of our teachers, all of our students, kind of a big piece of that, so that's an issue. And as we expand devices across the district, staff to support kind of all of that. So we've got a lot of competing realities. You know, some people think we're overstaffed. I think the numbers indicate that that's not really the case, that we could continue to use additional staffing. But as we have talked about in presentations before, it's how do we look at the short term? How do we look at the long term? How do we be, how are we being fiscally responsible so that we can remain financially stable over the short term or over the long term, or at least into the near future? So all of those kind of things play in, so this is all information that we look at and how we plan, so we'll be using bits and pieces of this in the spring as we look forward, and then we'll be kind of making that guess at what does kindergarten look like? You know, principals are kind of funny at the, right before school starts, especially elementary principals, because they see all these kids enrolling and rolling and rolling, and they're, they get kind of worried, and I, I'm kind of like, chill out, don't, we don't need to worry as bad, because if we look at the historical numbers, we're going to lose about fifty kids the first couple of weeks of school, so it's going to kind of balance out, it's not going to be as bad as what we think. And this year, in the first two weeks, we lost eighty-six. So this was a little bit higher, and we're down about one point three percent from the year before. So those are all pieces that we kind of look at as we try to plan and move forward. So thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Do we think we will be able to do anything more with opening more satellite early childhood for next year?
In theory, we should probably be able to. It's where we will look to. So will we expand in an existing location, or will we open up a new one? So, you know, part of it's not only is what is the space, but where?
Right.
Is, is the space going to be created, and what that may have an impact on us?
When, when we lose eighty-six students during those first month or so, what is the primary reason, are they just choosing private schools or moving or?
They're moving. Well, I, I always say that buildings tend to feel kids moving in more, because you've got all that paperwork that you're dealing with and the kids who are transferring out. A lot of that happens in the first two weeks as everybody else is starting school, so you, that's when the transfers out really start to ramp up is during that first couple of weeks. So usually, you know, it'll start to settle down a little bit around Labor Day shortly after, but, you know, even if we look from, those numbers were the last Wednesday in September, if we look at what enrollment was yesterday, we've gone down a little bit more, so that's just going to kind of continue to be the case, that's, at least that's what all the projections would indicate. That's partly why we want to engage a demographer again, to see if that's really going to play that again, because he'll look at the housing data a little bit better, he'll look at the birth rate a little bit more completely than we can.
I was just thinking that, does any, do you have a, your finger on the pulse of how many new homes are being built in our district recently?
So that's a challenge in and of itself, because if we go back to the demographer's report, we were anomaly, that for every new home built, we lose kids. So if we think about the relatively new subdivision by Porter Elementary, we have one student out of all of those homes. I mean, that's it. So new home doesn't necessarily mean kids, kids were, for us, I mean, we're, in that study, we were definitely, I mean, you'd only seen one other district that was like that. So when we update that, maybe that will still be the case, maybe we'll start, maybe that trend will start to bend a little bit, but that's why we get, that's why we want a little bit more expertise to help us kind of project that out, because like I said, that cohort survival model, it's built to predict stability, and it's the kindergarten that's the unknown for us.
Did the demographer give you a rationale for why that occurred? Why there's only one student? That's the problem.
So it's who, who's building, or what is, what's the type of home that's being built, and who's buying those homes? So when we show some of this information in, in parent meetings and P T Os, you know, it's kind of counterintuitive, you know, you think new homes, more kids. But are some of those homes being purchased by folks downsizing and don't have kids, so they're looking to move into a smaller home? Is it folks who do send their student, their children to private or parochial schools? So I mean, that, that's an impact. So it's not one thing, it's a multitude of things, but if we look at kind of the district overall and the demographics within our boundaries, it's an aging community, it's an aging population. So, you know, if we look at other districts around the region, like, you know, you think about Kirkwood, Webster, Limburg, they've all seen at some point some level of a generational turnover in housing. Parkway's kind of indicated they're starting to see some of that, like, I think Paul calls it the greening, kind of a re-greening, if you will. So I think that's going to happen at some point, it's just when is, when might that happen for us? But, you know, I think people are staying in their homes a lot longer as well. People are living longer, staying in their homes longer. There's a multitude of factors.
Has DESI started to do any discussions about what minimum standards are for mental health, behavioral staff, specialists, any of that?
No, they've really strayed away from any of the, what we would call resource standards. They've not revisited those in years, really. They've been, they've been pretty much the same for probably ten years, if not longer. But they don't get, their, their standards are really around administrators, librarians, counselors, and then just-
R ratios. Ratios.
Minimum, kinda a minimum standard for class size, a desirable standard for class size. And then kind of a PE, not really a standard, but kind of a guideline. PE and band can be bigger.
I would think somewhere as the model expands, that's a consideration, part of the discussion, for what we think our needs are here.
Well, you know, there's a lot more small districts in Missouri than there are big districts. And the small districts are not gonna want a minimum standard on
Yeah, and I agree with that.
More people.
I agree with that.
I mean, they'll view that as, you know, you're telling us we had, you know, an unfunded mandate, so.
Any other questions? All right. Could we have Bernard Middle?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm Lori Sullivan, the principal at Bernard Middle School. And this is Lauren Cumming, the assistant principal. We're pleased to be here this evening to share some details about the hard work being done by our students, staff, and parents at Bernard Middle School. I wanna start our presentation by celebrating Bernard being named a national model middle school by the International Center for Leadership and Education. We believe in continuous improvement. And one of the ways we facilitate this goal is by revisiting our mission with the input of students and staff. Our new mission is to empower students to actively engage in their learning journey using empathy, grit, and critical thinking skills to solve real-world problems.
Thanks to the implementation of innovative teaching strategies such as STEM, our hallways are becoming interactive learning corridors where students and teachers are engaging in learning experiences with real-world connections using communication, creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking. Classrooms are learning labs where we engage in learning walks with our staff and visitors from other districts. We have also hosted administrators from around the St. Louis area in collaboration with the EdPlus Middle Level Professional Learning Network. This year, I'm honored to co-facilitate the PLN meetings as we work to collaborate with our districts in St. Louis County, elicit feedback, and continuously evolve our practices to help every student succeed as we work to incorporate the elements of the portrait of a graduate.
When our leadership team designs our school improvement plan, we analyze data through three lenses: Portrait of a Graduate, our building dashboard data, and the district strategic plan. And here, we provide to you our specific goals as they relate to student engagement, student achievement, and effective and efficient. We are working to ensure our students are actively engaged in their learning journey and achieve at high levels in order to meet or exceed the expectations of a Melville graduate. Bernard opened in 2003 with eight hundred and ten students. After an initial drop, enrollment has remained fairly steady within the range of six hundred and forty to six hundred and ninety students. The drop that you see in 2019 of thirty-seven students was a result of redistricting. Our demographic data shows twenty-six percent of our students qualifying for free or reduced lunch. Special education students make up eighteen percent of our population. Seven percent of our students qualify for instruction in the gifted program. And our EL population has risen from nine percent to sixteen percent. Bernard's population is not very ethnically diverse as we are composed of about eighty percent white students, with the remaining twenty percent being mostly black, Hispanic, and Asian. Like most schools, we are noticing a rise in the number of students who are identified as having some sort of mental or emotional challenge which impacts their learning. This data has led us to incorporate trauma-informed professional development for staff. We are excited to survey our students and staff using Panorama, a new tool being piloted by the district that will give us more information about the needs of our students and enable us to design interventions and supports in collaboration with our PBIS team. Bernard's attendance rate is steady, at just above the ninety percent mark expected by Desi. We have implemented incentives and supports to increase our daily attendance rate.
This year, ADA will include proportional attendance rates for the annual performance review in order for attendance data to reflect consistent data over time. Schools will receive one point for ninety percent or above, half a point for students between eighty-seven and a half and eighty-nine point nine nine percent, and a quarter of a point for students between eighty-five and eighty-seven point four nine. Knowing this, we engage in weekly in-depth analysis of student attendance data, which helps us know our kids more holistically and provide targeted interventions to help them access school more regularly as we guide them through their educational journey.
One of the ways that we are helping to engage our students in their learning journey is through collaborative co-taught classes composed of one general education teacher and one special school district teacher. ELA and math courses follow the traditional CT model. In science and social studies, we are addressing student needs in the area of social skills by having our speech-language pathologists push into the general education setting. These efforts have allowed us to minimize the number of essentials classes in order to keep students in the least restrictive environment and in class as much as possible with their peers, resulting in three fewer essentials classes and five more co-taught classes this school year. We are very proud of our instructional practices inventory data, which shows ninety percent of our snapshots were a level-three or higher for teacher and student engagement. Extracurricular activities also increased the level of engagement at Bernard. Our students help us brainstorm what clubs are offered each school year. This year, we are happy to announce that we have twenty-two different clubs for our students, including the inaugural Bernard Middle School First LEGO League Robotics Team, which will compete in their qualifiers this December. The implementation of the eight-period schedule has allowed us to offer more choices to our students, as you can see in the increased enrollment numbers for our PLTW courses. We're excited to see more students accessing courses of their interest as this leads to stronger motivation for learning and increased excitement to be at school. Our discipline referrals have decreased significantly over the last three years. We attribute this to the integration of our strong PBIS and character education programs, as well as innovative teachings such as STEM and project-based learning. This chart shows our historical English Language Arts MAP data for the percentage of our students scoring proficient or advanced from 2015 through 2017. We analyze this data by providing individual teachers with class lists showing the previous year's achievement level for each student in math and English Language Arts. These lists help teachers create small groups for interventions and make instructional decisions. The next chart shows, narrows our focus to see specific percentages of students scoring proficient or advanced for our students with and without IEPs. We use this information to design interventions and supports in our co-taught classes.
So here we have our building breakdown for mastery levels on the ELA reading pre-test this fall. The percentages show the percent of standards our students are meeting, approaching, or beginning the expectations on each assessment. This is a new test that was created by a team of teachers this summer using the Certica Item Bank that was purchased with the Mastery Connect program. We look forward to comparing these results to the results obtained during the winter benchmarking session to analyze growth in addition to the overall levels of rigor on the tests themselves. But we don't stop our analysis there. This chart is used by our teachers for both the building and their individual classes to narrow their focus as they analyze student needs in regards to the grade level power standards. Teachers use this data to generate their student learning objectives every year. We also break down the data to look at each of our subgroups in order to make data-driven decisions to meet the needs of our diverse learners, as you can see in our IEP subgroup breakdown for ELA this year. Our department chairs receive detailed reports for their content area, which are analyzed and discussed at monthly and weekly grade-level department meetings. Teachers analyze the growth of their individual students by clicking on the bars in the bar graph to generate a list of student names. Our teachers collaborate to create flexible student groupings to address skills in small-group settings and assess student growth using over two hundred formative and summative assessments created by teachers in Mastery Connect this year to track progress between the benchmark sessions. This metric, FastBridge, is a data point utilized by our SSD staff in collaboration with our co-teachers in both math and ELA. FastBridge A Reading is an adaptive skills test for kindergarten through twelfth grade, fully implemented this year. Students with IEP goals for skills specific to reading are screened three times a year and then given progress monitoring assessments throughout. Students in co-taught courses receive progress monitoring once a month, and essentials classes are tested twice a month on questions relating to their individual needs outlined in their IEP. Teachers analyze this data and use the results to drive their instruction. We also use MAP data to compare our student achievement to those of our peer groups in schools across the state. Through our work with the middle-level PLN, we have developed collaborative relationships with several of the schools with whom we match demographically, and we are learning from each other. Just last week, we were able to send two teachers to our mega PLN where they spent the morning sharing resources and generating ideas to help all students achieve in the areas of ELA and math.
The next chart shows our historical math MAP data for the percentage of our students scoring proficient or advanced in the same years. Although our data is not where we want it to be, we have increased the number of co-taught classes, tutoring opportunities, and provided professional development for our math teachers through Discovery Education Math Coaching. Analysis of our IEP subgroup data for the MAP test reveals our students are achieving at significantly lower rates than their peers. This data has driven our decisions to increase co-taught classes and engage in flexible student groupings for targeted instruction.
In the area of math, we can see there is much opportunity for student growth. The Mastery Connect data allows us to pinpoint the exact areas in which each student needs to grow this year. Here we have a breakdown of our sixth-grade regular math standard analysis. Our sixth-grade teachers have analyzed this data and identified skills from fifth grade that vertically align with these standards in which our students are struggling. Our teachers have added those fifth-grade standards to their data trackers in order to track student growth and know exactly when each child is ready to progress in their learning journey. While this graph shows our IEP subgroup breakdown, we are also using this as an example of the ways we break down the data for each of our subgroups, including ethnicities, ELL, and free and reduced lunch populations, so that our teachers have a comprehensive report of our student achievement. The standard analysis breakdown helps teachers identify individual needs for students in each of our subgroups. Mastery levels are assessed regularly in the classroom, and data is imported into the Mastery Connect system to help teachers track student growth between the benchmarking sessions. The FastBridge data for math shows this fall, Bernard's students taking the A math assessment did as well or better than twelve percent of students taking the assessment nationwide as compared to the Melville district as a whole, which scored two percent. Here, we can see our student achievement levels as compared to their peers across the state of Missouri in the area of eighth-grade math. This data reports on the eighth-grade students who are taking the regular eighth-grade math course as our Algebra I students take the Algebra I end-of-course exam each spring. This year, we have twenty percent of our eighth graders enrolled in the high-school-level Algebra I course.
We are very proud of our entire teaching staff at Bernard, which is composed of teachers with many different experience levels. This combination leads to exceptional collaboration opportunities where teachers learn from one another and share their particular talents and skills. We wanna thank you for this opportunity to share the story of the Bernard community. And we appreciate all of your efforts to support us.
Thank you. Jean, turn your microphone on, please.
I was curious, when will we get the results of the winter benchmark testing?
Yes, so winter benchmarking will take place in January. We turn for second semester. And so we'll be analyzing that data end of January, beginning of February.
And second of all, what is Numbered Heads Together?
Numbered Heads Together is a club that the kids meet after school once a week, and they work together. It's, Numbered Heads Together came from a Kagan strategy, the name of a Kagan strategy, that you work together. So we do that strategy a lot in our classrooms. So we decided, okay, let's take that after school. And you can't have one kid, or one adult, sitting with every child. We just don't have the staff to do that. But if the kids sit together with the same homework assignment, and we have tutors sitting with them, then their Numbered Heads Together are working together to solve their problems. And it kinda becomes a game to some kids. They like staying after if they're working on their homework together. So it helps.
It increases math talk, too, which is something we're working on in our classrooms to engage in critical thinking regarding math. And what we see is that we see our students feeling more confident in the area of math because they're able to actually talk out the problem and the steps that they're taking to solve the problem, compare that with a step that maybe a peer took, analyze which one worked, or maybe they both worked, and they get to sort of talk about, talk about why, giving them just an extra hour of contact with math before they head home for the day.
Sure, anything that gets them excited about learning is a good thing, so.
First of all, I wanted to applaud you guys because not only did you make it through a school day, you made it through a mixer before coming here.
I know, I got black light bottles.
And managing that parking lot. So, thank you very much. That was a, you know, perfect schedule, right? But I also wanted to mention that I really love the fact that your school and the other schools are using these lenses where they're kind of overlapping to get to your school improvement plan. I think that's brilliant, and it's really smart. So I like that a lot. And I wanted to get some feedback from you. I know I had asked and you answered about that extra elective the students could take. So that increased, that Project Lead the Way participation, which is awesome. And I know my, my son, like, is ecstatic about the fact he's always been a band kid. So now he gets to explore extra electives. Is that the feedback you're getting overall? That's what I was wondering.
Absolutely. Our kids are so excited, their parents are excited. I think just the level of engagement with our kids is amazing. You know, when you talk about kids having discipline problems, and they're in our offices, and we're talking to them, can I go back to class now? Are we done? You know, they want to get back to class. They wanna be in class. They wanna be in those elective classes. They're having fun at school, and they're learning.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's good to hear.
Any other?
What are your observations about co-teaching? And the reason I ask that, from what I did on the study committee with the special school district, there's always, there's always comments about how well the classroom teachers and SSD teachers work together. So what are your observations?
I have a prepared answer. But what I wanted, that I was looking for here, and I don't even see it on here. But when you pair a general education teacher in their expertise area, whether it's language arts or math or science, and then you pair a special school district teacher that has expertise in how kids learn and the way kids learn pending their disability, and you put those two teachers in a room, and they talk as they're teaching, and they have time also together that we build into their schedule so that they have time to talk without kids in the room, the results are just exponentially different than they would be if you did not have that.
We appreciate all your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your work as well. Thank you.
All right, Beasley Elementary.
Thank you, I brought my water up. I've been sick, and then I cannot get rid of my cough. So I don't know if anyone, hopefully none of you catch this because it starts out, and then like for three weeks, I've had this cough. So the more I talk, sometimes I start coughing. So hopefully I'll make it through all of this. And I also just wanna say that, if I really get started, that I had no idea what the parents were gonna say tonight. They volunteered, a lot of them volunteered. And so it was exciting for me. That was the first time I heard some of the feedback from some of those parents. So it's very, very exciting. So, good evening. And I wanna thank you for giving me this opportunity to share a little bit about the Beasley story. This is our mission, working together for every child every day. And at Beasley, it's definitely a team effort. We really know that we're making a difference. We create that learning environment that's so good for every child. And one of the things that we do is, of course, we focus on academics, but we really focus on the whole child and really looking at those needs that our students have. The next slide shows our Beasley enrollment. It shows you the change over time. And so it's a lot of what Dr. Gaines was talking about. Our enrollment has decreased at Beasley. Part of it was due to redistricting. You can see we had some years where we were close to four hundred and fifty students at different times during the year. Currently, we're actually at three thirty-nine today. And that's including our pre-K. We have one pre-K classroom. This shows our elementary, our enrollment historically. And this includes free reduced lunch, as well as our ELL. So you can see that increase in our free reduced lunch over those years. This is our current enrollment by grade level. And so you can see the number of sections that we have. We have three sections in kindergarten through third grade. Our fourth and fifth grade, we only have two sections, which at times can be a challenge, you know, just in that collaboration time, just in that collaboration time, as well as sometimes when you're trying to group students and things like that. This is our enrollment compared to peer schools, and it also shows our free reduced lunch compared to some of our peer schools. There are many different schools that we can choose when we do some of these comparisons. These are the ones that are most like Beasley in many different categories. These are our demographics by ethnicity. When you look at it, this shows last year, school year, and this school year. We have had an increase in our Asian population, our multiracial, as well as our Black population. We have seen a decrease in our Hispanic that was mostly due to redistricting, as well as a decrease in our white population. There is a lot of diversity at Beasley, and our, one of the things when you were talking about the ELL, we do offer interpreters for our home visits as well, because we want to make sure all of those parents are included in those families. This shows a little more of our demographics breakdown. A couple of things are that we have had a decrease in our gifted population. At this time, we currently have no 1st or 2nd graders in the gifted program at stretch, and we only have one 3rd grader. So that's something that we really would like to see increase, is trying to get our students to qualify for those extra opportunities like that. Our homeless is an ever-changing number. It's constantly fluctuating at Beasley. Also since redistricting, we have seen our special ed population increase, and like I said before, our ELL has decreased since redistricting. This is our free reduced lunch historically, so you can see Beasley has continued to increase. I also showed you our September 1st of this year. Last year, we were close to 60% all year, and I know you saw some of that when we were doing the universal breakfast program and everything. Our September 1st, we were about 57%. And then what happens is, a lot of those families are carried over from last year, and then we have a date at the end of September when they have to have filled out a new form. So it's interesting, at the beginning of October, we're really at 52.94, and we have students who the families haven't filled out the paperwork, and so it may, that number may fluctuate as families realize, oh, I am owing a lot of money again. This is our building attendance rate, and you can see overall, we have pretty steady attendance. We have seen a little bit of drops in our attendance, but we are above the state average. This is our percentage of students last year in the 1718 school year who are meeting the 90-90 attendance requirement. One of the things, our goals, is that we don't want any of those students below the 80%. We do have some students that aren't held plans and other things like that, but we'd like to see those six students that are below the 80% not be in that range. And we're really working hard to fight truancy. We're trying to get a student empowerment program started. It's in the beginning stages right now with the family court and juvenile system. And, I mean, we're proud, though, because we had 311 students, which is 91.77% that were at above that 90-90. These are Beasley dates of lowest average attendance, and I know, I know you might want to see this compared to other schools. What's interesting about Beasley is really there's not a lot of significance, other than like the eclipse day and things like that. What we notice as a staff when we look across the year, Mondays are our hardest day, getting our kids back after the weekend. Fridays also at times can be difficult. But as you can see, some of those are holidays or the day, our families must have taken a lot of vacations over Martin Luther King holiday, because last year was Friday and Monday, or Friday the day before and the day after. This is a slide about our reading services. I'm excited to say that this year, we have the highest number of reading services, students being serviced in many years, and that's kindergarten through 4th grade. Last year, we weren't even able to serve 4th grade at all, so that's been exciting to see that change. Originally, when I sent you the slide, I had said 12 students at a 5th grade who are not being served, who qualified and met the district requirements that are set. I'm happy to say that Friday was into first quarter, and we looked at reading levels again. Of course, we're constantly collecting that data, but that's when we actually reported it, and we have seven students as of Friday who now are, who qualify but are not being served. And what the other thing about that is, two of them are ELL, so they are getting ELL services. Two of them do have IEPs, so they're getting some kind of services through that. Two of them are new to Beasley, so we're going to work our Beasley magic and get those up. And three of them are just at what is a Level R, you know how my parents said he has no idea what a Level E is? Well, a Level R is just one level below where they should be. They should be on an S at the beginning of the year. So that's how close some of these students are. So at Beasley, when we see a student in need, we do something, and so we always put supports in place for those kids. So besides their daily classroom instruction that they're getting, we will make sure that all seven of those students are in tutoring three days a week with a certified reading teacher, and we can do that through our Title I funds, so that is great. This slide is just an overview, and I know you've had a chance to look at it, of our achievement level on MAP for 2017, which is the last data that we have available. This gives you a better breakdown of it, and you can see our growth across the grades as well as our cohort growth. That's ELA, sorry, I forgot to say that. And then this is our ELA broken down a little bit more. One of the things you'll notice about Beasley, we studied a lot on the subgroup achievement, is that the difference between our free reduced lunch and our non-free reduced lunch is not as great as you'll see in other schools. Having that higher percentage of free reduced lunch, we don't see that big of a discrepancy. Our greatest difference is in that IEP category. And I know some of them are not working on grade level, but at the same time, you know, they have other goals, but at the same time, we'd like to see that improve. And our ELL, this is exciting news, our ELL, if you look at their performance on MAP, they actually perform very close to their peers that are not in ELL on ELA, so that's exciting. We are doing co-teaching in kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, and 4th grades. We have students in all grades, of course, being served, but those are our co-teaching grades. This is our overall math achievement. Again, you can see our growth. It's not where we want it to be, of course. I know as a district, that's definitely a focus. You can, you can see the gains in that chart, though. This one also shows it broken down by free reduced lunch. Our IEP, again, that's our greatest difference, and then the ELL. What's also interesting in the math is our male outperform our female, and in ELA, our female outperform our male. So we've really been looking at our teaching practices to say, okay, is it something that we're doing it? Is it innate, you know, in some of the students, or how can we change some of that? So we're really looking at those kinds of things as well. What we've noticed with our science is that our ELL, the concepts are harder, and there's more vocabulary, so we do see a difference in that. This shows our results compared to some of our peer schools in ELA and math. I'm excited to say that we can hang with our peer schools, I would say. So there's a couple of schools that are outperforming us, but overall, we're doing pretty well compared to our peers. This is the same thing in science. As you can see, there's only one of our peer schools in this group that were, that are outperforming us. We're right with another one, and two are actually below us in our science. This shows our staffing ratios with our comparison schools, and I'm excited to say our staffing ratio is good at Beasley, and that really helps. This is our Mastery Connect math data. One thing that we're proud of is from the pre-test to the post-test, you can see a lot of growth in our students. A lot of our students do not come in with the prerequisite skills, so we have a lot of foundational building to do at each level. Again, this is the rest of our Mastery Connect data for the other grade levels, and this is it broken down a little bit more. You can see the growth, with the bottom, it shows you the growth from pre to post, and then how many, that's the percentage of mastered standards, how much of a growth it was. And I like to say that we see growth in all of our grade levels, but I also compared it against the district, and our 4th and 5th grade actually made growth higher than the district percentage. This is the year-to-year data for our next-up guided reading assessment, so this is comparing different groups of students. Again, we have those high expectations for all of these students. There's a lot of differentiating, scaffolding, and modeling that goes on. We never want to lower our standards. This is it, the same information, but it's comparing cohort change, so when you're looking at it, you can see the differences between those same students as they move through the grade levels. And if you look on our dashboard currently, our 3rd and 5th grade are on target for this year, and our 4th grade is close to being on target. These are school improvement goals. They look very similar to a lot of the other elementary schools, because they're aligned to our strategic plan and the other things that we have as a focus for our district. Two of those, two of those are CCI school-wide goals for us as well. These are action steps to meet the goals. Some of the things, they're again aligned with the things that we see as needs. One of them I wanted to point out is we are going to complete a book study. We're getting started on that. It's called Mathematical Mindsets, so it's a great book. The math committee did this book study last year, and we're doing this as a school this year. And this just shows, we like to break out all the things that we're doing that lead to student achievement, and all those things that, and how it's broken down, and how it aligns to Portrait of a Graduate. These are additional focuses that we have here at Beasley. We did do flexible placement in kindergarten, I know there were some questions about that. We are doing zones of regulation as a school-wide universal. You've heard a little bit about our homeworks. We try to do a lot of leadership opportunities during the day. Our students don't always have transportation after school, so we try to embed as much of that during the school day as we can. And then you can see all those other things that we do to meet students' basic needs. And we know that big change takes time, so what we look for every day are those little daily practices that lead to those changes every day. And this is kind of one of the things that we believe in. We see every one of, every one of the things that happen not as challenges, but as opportunities. And it's emotional for me because I live the daily challenges with some of my students, and so do our staff. We always focus on the positive. We always look for, you know, what's going right and that growth mindset, and it makes such a difference in the lives of those kids every day. So it's hard to put all that in a slideshow for you, so I invite you to come to our school. I know Peggy was at the family dinner. You can feel it when you walk in Beasley. I know other people have seen that, too. So I invite you to visit and see all of this firsthand.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I'll ask one question. Talk to me about the kindergarten placement. I don't know much about that. I'd like to know more.
Okay. So this is something we've talked about for a couple of years, actually a few years, because we do this in every other grade level, okay? So what we do is we sit down as teachers, and we really look at all the different things about students, and about how they learn. We look at where they're at on different levels, whether they're ELL, things like that, so that we can best meet their needs, and then we place them into classes based on that. We look at co-teaching based on that, all of those types of things. And so our kindergarten teachers say, you know, we kind of go into this blind. We don't know the kids very well. I mean, we have playdates and things like that. One, the parents are usually there, which is fine, but like you heard one of my parents say, her kid's totally different at home than he is at school. So this way, it's like, wow, we can bring the kids to school and see what they're like in the first few days, and see what their needs are, and really place them with the group of kids and the group, and the teacher who's best going to meet their needs. And so we feel like we have a much more, just a better cooperative group. You're always going to have those challenges, like I said, and those opportunities, but we just feel like as far as a learning environment and that, just that environment of collaboration, that environment of working together, it's so much better this year. And the other thing that was really interesting is, we were really worried about the parent piece, and I know Jeff was worried about it, too, and he's like, okay, I don't want a bunch of phone calls. You know, he's like, so, well, no, you didn't say it like that. You just said like, you know, I don't want parents calling upset they don't know who their teacher is, like that kind of phone calls. And I said, you know, I don't think that's going to happen, because we have such a good trusting relationship. And it was really interesting, the very first meeting that we talked about it, when they were coming up, we do a kindergarten screening in May, and when they came up, we told them about it. And the parents were like, that's great, that sounds good. I would much rather you get to know my child, and get to know what they need, and do what you think's best, and we'll work together as a partner to think about that. And so we did. We talked to the parents a lot, we had them fill out things about their child, we invited them up to school for a welcome to kindergarten night, and it was really get to know our school, and not necessarily, it wasn't so focused on getting to know your teacher. It's like getting to know our school, here's our kindergarten staff. I feel like they know the whole staff better, not just their kindergarten teacher. And then after, we only did it for three days, and I know other schools did it longer. By Monday, they knew who their teacher was. They got a letter home and everything. And on Tuesday night, we had like a curriculum night, meet your teacher, all those types of things, and it was just, it was so much more relaxed, and I felt like, they just felt like they belonged more than I've seen in the past with our kindergarten group.
Thank you.
I know that was a lot for your question, but.
It's great.
I was excited about it.
Quick, if you might explain to the rest of the board, in case Karen, so when I came and helped serve dinner, I kind of understood the homework thing, and Mrs. Hancock elaborated, but what I didn't understand is that there is a not-for-profit organization that's helping implement that, and so either they could look, I'm looking at their website right now, either they could look at their website, but I thought it was all, I was actually so worried that you teachers spent all of your own hard-earned money on the food, and so.
No, they, they, yeah, they provide all of that. They have sponsors. She comes in and talks to us about the sponsors, about who's donating money, and she has funny stories, like her neighbor works, is the head CEO of Centene, that's one of their big contributors, just things like that. And so, yeah, other people in St. Louis are supporting this program, and I think the thing that's been great for us is it's given us other supports that I didn't even know were going to come out of it, and it's been really neat. As far as other needs that our families have, I've been able to kind of hook them up with other things. We have an Amarin Assistance Program going on, so there's going to be a focus group with Amarin with some of our parents, and then they're coming in and doing a night that's just full of lots of hope for our parents. And I actually had to make a list because I couldn't think, remember all the things that they're doing, but it's like energy efficient, trying to make their homes energy efficient, talking about bills, to all kinds of other supports for our family, including water, it's not just Amarin. So it's, I mean, it's just, it's really helped with those kinds of connections.
Right, yeah, that's great. And I just, because I didn't know anything about it until Karen introduced herself, I'm like, oh, I didn't know there was another organization. So that's awesome that we're getting that financial support plus support in general.
Yes, because all those things you saw in the bag, like they, they provide that, there's a chart that says from cradle to career, and like they provide those charts. There's other information in there that they suggest are in there, but they give us the bags, all those types of things, you know, are with the support of the homeworks program.
But we do appreciate all the teachers' time.
Right, I could have.
Spending their time in the evenings.
Yeah, we have the, sometimes you have these crazy ideas, and you hope other people are going to follow you with them, and when I first brought it up, I was overwhelmed by the amount of response that the teachers had right away. And I know Karen was, too. It doesn't usually happen like that, she told me. She said that usually it grows, which ours will grow, but she said usually you don't get the amount of teachers that we have involved in the program their first year, because it's a big commitment.
It is, and I think I said this at the last meeting, but if you would let all of your staff know that we certainly acknowledge and appreciate that they're putting in this extra time to do great things.
Because it's happened on weekends, I mean, they're giving up their Saturday mornings, things like that. It's great.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Thank you for all your work. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, and like I said, stop by anytime.
Okay, facilities, capital financing options.
I don't have any pockets.
He's got a red tie on. This is bad news.
You know, if I had a polka dot die with like six or seven colors, I would have worn it, but I don't, so no polka dot tie. How do you back this thing up? It's not backing up. Can we back it up? There we go. Thanks a lot. Okay, so the first thing, there's a lot of questions from time to time on what our propositions are and what the ballot language is, so just for your reference to look at at your leisure at a later time, I've got the propositions that we've had going back to 2000, and then I've also got ballot language for Prop P, and I've got ballot language for Prop T. That's just nice to have. Sometimes you're wondering what that data is. It's right there that you can refer to. All right, so we're here to talk about financing options in the future. So as a quick recap, right now, we use, as you probably know, we use 51 cents for paying off the annual cop lease debt. After fiscal year 2021, we'll probably need less than 2 cents to pay that off, or to pay off the remaining cop through 2029. That means after fiscal year 21, we're going to have about 49 cents to figure out what we want to do with. One cent right now, one tax levy cent equals about $179,000. So 49 cents is about almost $8.8 million per year. So the first step then would seem like, you know, as you're getting ready to make plans, first of all, what are your key areas of need? And then the second step is, of the key areas of need, how do you want to divvy out that 49 cents to take care of those areas of need? So to me, when I'm looking at the district finance needs, one area is recurring costs. It's stabilizing the future funding of just the core predictable recurring infrastructure with a restricted-use capital levy. Another need is the capital projects, and we've got a long list of catching up through a history of underfunding. And that's part of our five-year capital planning that goes beyond five years where there's a long list of many projects. And the third area of need is in the operation, the operating fund. And that's to fund continuing to fund expanding educational programs, continuing to do the salary restructure, to get more competitive salaries, and then just the general funding of operations to meet the long-term trends of inflation outpacing revenues. When we look at the budget, we look through all those pages, there's pages there that show that long-term history of revenues are about 1%. They increase at a rate of about 1% less per year than what our expenses increase. So just, you know, doing the math over time, you've got issues there. So those are, those are the needs that would be apparent to me. So then of those needs, how do you go about financing and funding and using that 49 cents to meet those needs? Well, if you just really, you know, start with a blank slate and look at all your options, you know, one option is just simply do nothing, reduce the 49 cents. It's probably not the most advisable. We are the 21st lowest district out of 22 districts in the county for spend per student. So that's an option, probably not advisable. Number two is the restricted capital levy that would take care of the, just the recurring core predictable infrastructure. Items three, four, and five are good for your capital projects, your cop lease debt, your geo bond debt, or if you don't want to do debt, you can simply make transfers from the general fund to the capital fund to fund your projects. And then, as we talked about, just putting money in the general fund to fund your operations. Most likely, since you've got multiple areas of need and every one of those financing options have advantages for different types of funding, most likely you're going to be in number seven, where you're going to have a combination of using a number of those options. So when we look at each of these options more closely and we look at the pluses and minuses, you know, first of all, we look at the capital levy. If you do this, it provides ongoing funding, provides automatic funding that ensures that the core recurring predictable infrastructure is properly funded and there's no interest expense. It's not debt. It's an annual levy. It helps you avoid future underfunding and, you know, that situation, the classic example of a five-year period where we've got two buses and another five-year period where we've got 28 buses. That helps prevent that catch-up situation. It really eliminates pressure on future boards to choose how to fund this core infrastructure. When I first walked in, there were, there's a lot of pressure on the board to fund other more immediate needs. That's why we had only bought two buses in five years. A levy like this eliminates that pressure from the board. It takes care of it and automatically funds these very core needs. If there's a minus, it would be if you don't make the levy restrictive, then the minus would be that, you know, over time, future boards can eventually just decide not to do the levy or spend the levy on different things. But if you make it restrictive, that's, that won't happen. Normally, when you're looking at options, you like to have flexibility. And so a restrictive levy would limit your flexibility, but that's a low risk on something like this because the kinds of things you're funding are very predictable recurring stuff that there's not a high chance or high probability that you're not going to need that. It's very low risk. So that's the capital levy. Moving on to cop lease debt, that's going to be more appropriate to help out with your capital projects. If you have a cop lease debt, it's, you know, it's 20 million, 30 million, 40 million, whatever, whatever number would be decided that you want to pull money into your capital projects, you can pull that all at once. So you've got the ability to have a big, long list of capital projects, get all your money upfront, get your projects done. It also provides a mechanism to have future no-tax increases. As time passes and you're paying off your debt, you can do refinancings and down the road have no-tax increases to fund more projects. It also only requires a simple majority of voter approval. The downside is that the interest rates are about half percent higher than geo bonds, so it's more expensive. And there's also uncertainty on the revenue stream because they work different than geo bonds, where in the nutshell, you're really estimating your future assessed value. So if that estimate is low and unfavorable, you'll end up spending money out of your general fund to pay off that bond. If it's favorable, you'll actually make money, but it's uncertain. So with it being uncertain, if it's unfavorable, the other negative there is the risk of using general funds to pay off a portion of the debt. And the other thing is if you pull down millions and millions of dollars and have tons of projects to get done immediately, you'll have to hire consultants or additional staff to manage those projects because Mike has a limit to the capacity of what he can manage at one time. So we'd have to have help. Another option for capital projects is geo bond debt. And just like the cops, you get the ability to get many projects done upfront because you get the money upfront. Same thing, you can have future no-tax increases for additional funding. The plus is that the interest rates are less than cop leases. And the plus is that you do have certainty of the revenue because unlike the cops, every year you determine what you need to levy to make those debt payments. So there is no variance on, on your, you know, on your revenue. So there's no risk of needing to use general funds someday. The minus is you need a greater percentage of voter approval to pass the geo bond. And just like the cops, you're going to have to hire consultants or additional staff to manage all of those projects. The next option, general fund transfers, this is where we, instead of taking on debt, we basically just transfer money from the general fund over to the capital fund each year. So the advantage of that is there's no voter approval that's necessary. There's no interest expense. You save millions and millions of dollars. There's a lot of moving parts, but one educated estimate on geo bonds are ultimately over the life of a 20-year geo bond at estimated interest rates, sort of where the landscape looks like it might be going, over that 20-year time, you're going to pay about 44%, your interest expense would be about 44% of your bond issue. So if you had $40 million, 44% of $40 million is how much you're going to pay in interest over those 20 years. With this, there's no, there's no interest expense. You could probably strike out the third bullet. I meant to pull that out on no need to hire consultants or additional staff because you really probably do need to hire, and I'll explain on that. So just strike that out. There's no risk of needing to use additional general funds like you would on a cop because you know exactly what you're transferring. So there's no surprises. One plus on this is you also have flexibility to adjust the number of years. You may go in thinking, we're going to do this for five years. Well, you get down the road, you might decide you're going to do it for seven years. Or, you know, you might adjust the amount that you want to transfer, and that can, that can be a plus. The minuses on this are your capital projects are spread out over a number of years because if we jump down a few bullet points, DESI caps how much you can transfer each year. And it's kind of alluded formula, but basically it's somewhere around four and a half million dollars for us right now based on all the parameters. So it's not like you can pull down $40 million on year one. It's about four and a half million dollars is the max. So if you've got tons and tons of projects, it's going to take, you know, multiple years to fund that. But even at four and a half million dollars, you're still going to need to be hiring consultants or additional staff to manage those projects because right now we're pretty maxed out. There's a little bit of an uncertainty of revenue stream, but this is a pretty minor point, so it's almost a moot point. And, you know, your sense on tax levy will change as your assessed value changes, but that's not a significant minus. We talked about the maximum cap. And then the other thing is the flexibility is a double-edged sword because the minus on that is over time, if you get future boards that have different focuses, when you get a cop or a geo bond, you're locked in, that's your plan. That's it. You have 20 years or so, 10 years to pay off that debt, that's your plan. Something like this, every single year, you have to make that transfer. So in the future, it could, you know, it could be decided that we're not going to do that. We're going to, we're going to spend it on something else. So you're not locked in. Finally, operating funds. Money goes in the general fund. You use it for the expanded educational programs or the salary restructure or just keeping up with general expenses that you need to keep up with inflation, you know, over the years. And the minus on that is down the road, once again, it's not, it's not like a cop lease debt or a geo bond debt or a capital levy where you're locked in. It's, it's an annual decision. So down the road, different decisions can be made to take a different path than what was decided upfront. I think the, you know, overall, what you're looking at is really just trying to consider how are you going to divvy out that 49 cents to each of the areas of need? And like I said before, most likely, you're going to be, you know, each of those financing options have advantages for the different types of needs. So you're probably going to be addressing multiple needs. You're probably going to be using a number of those financing options. It's just what's your balance, what's your, what's your allocation? That's all I have. Any questions?
Anybody have anything? Okay. Thank you for the information. Okay, absolutely. All right. Criteria for performance excellence.
There we go. So this month, we are here to just partially just kind of rebrief you with regards to where we're at with our criteria for performance excellence. So part of this role is to educate you. I know some of you have the experience and that's great. I think it makes this process a little bit easier. And for those of you that don't necessarily, then it's kind of slowly bringing the board along to understand really what this process looks like and how we are looking to try to be able to continue to make change within the district. So we start with the organizational profile. And so as part of that, there are seven key pieces to it. Warren takes just a couple of minutes tonight to be able to break down those key pieces.
All right. So in the hexagons, these are the categories, and we have leadership, strategy, customers, workforce, operation, and results. And it's all driven by everything running back to results. And each part of the, each and every category has results that are tied to it that indicate how the organization is performing.
With regards to the core values and the concepts, that's kind of like the house foundation. You know, when the, when the foundation is strong, then many of the pieces are strong with this. And so when we consider the foundation of the core values and the concepts, those revolve around the systems we currently have in place, concepts as a vision, where are we going from an educational field, things like student-centered excellence in any particular field about valuing people, about valuing the workforce and the work in which people do, as well as, you know, one of the things that we've continued, I think, to be able to get better at, and that's be a little bit more agile and to really sharpen that focus on learning.
When you look at the criteria and break it down, leadership is the first category, and it is relevant with strong leadership. The organization has that foundation for success now and for the future, and it's not dependent on a person. It's more operating on a process and procedure that's in place to where people just know how to act and what to do.
The next piece we look at is the strategy piece. And so for us, that really is reflective in the strategic plan. So what you want strategy to be able to address are our challenges. And currently, when you look at our strategic plan, it does address our challenges. It also addresses some of the levels of advantages that we have in order to be able to continue to focus on improvement, both in the short term as well as that continued improvement process.
When you think of our customers, we have many customers. One of the most important is our students. And so part of being relevant to our customers requires us listening to them and seeing how satisfied or dissatisfied they are with how our operation and how our organization is running and inevitably their education. And of course, we want to exceed expectations at all times. And so part of that process will be identifying our customers and then getting feedback from our customers and making decisions based on that.
And I should say, that's a real shift in terms of what education has looked like maybe when all of us were in school. And, you know, obviously our current culture, we want it to be more reflective of student voice, student choice, and to be able to receive input back from kids as we design programs that are really designed to be able to help kids. So our next piece that we continue to try to get better at, and I think we continue to put better structures in place to be able to address some of these pieces, and that is the use of data. So the measurement piece of it, the analysis piece, so how do we analyze the data? And then ultimately, when we know what to be able to do with that, is what changes do we make to respond to the change, whether that's us being out in front of it or sometimes us needing to be reactive to it? And that can also identify best practices, places and things that are going well that we can really try to replicate in other places.
And when we think of workforce, we of course want to have an engaged workforce and we want them to be adaptive. And again, with that change process Brian's talking about, and be able to maintain them, have them performing at a high level and just create an environment that's, that's positive and successful for operations.
So speaking of operations, this isn't necessarily something that you think about as much maybe from a school level, but when you really drill down into what operations is, what's part of it, the work we do, the product design. So that looks a little different in a business setting than maybe what it does in an educational setting. But concepts such as innovation, well, we hear that phrase a lot. We try to practice that phrase a lot. And so those kinds of concepts are necessary and essential to success. And so the operations piece of this organizational profile is, you know, they're all important pieces, but this is one in particular to me that I know we still have a lot of room in which to be able to grow.
And it all again going back to results for our processes and our operational factors. And it kind of gives it that, our ability to be agile on our feet and using our day-to-day operation information to make better decisions so that we can have long-term success that we can sustain.
And this last slide that you see here is focused in that middle, which is about integration. So when you look at any two of these pieces, there's alignment and there's integration. So you can be talking about leadership and strategy. You can understand that strong leaders are going to put forth a strong strategic plan or that the strategic plan will have a very strong focus on what you do with your customers. And whether you're going from just on the left-hand side of that chart or the right-hand side of that chart, you can also integrate. You can go back and forth, and any piece can be reflective on any other piece. And so when a, when a very strong organization has all of these concepts in mind and can practice those effectively, that's really when you will start to see an organization really take off and have great, great levels of continued success. Not just the short term, it's not just a Band-Aid, it is a permanent addressing of issues that any organization may run into. So that's our monthly Ball of Rich report. We're back with you in November, I guess. Any questions for us?
practice those effectively, that's really when you will start to see an organization really take off and have great, great levels of continued success. Not just the short term, it's not just a Band-Aid, it is a permanent addressing of issues that any organization may run into. So that's our monthly ballroom report, we'll be back with you in, in November, I guess. Any questions for us?
And I just think, how, um, it must be really difficult to, as instant adaptation of concept, you know, like this, like spin on the dime, and something's not working, and I just want to put this in this, uh... This slide, uh, a workforce, a team that can have a hard time, and engaging workers to adapt, my system changes, which means, but adapt and change, and success, and I think, I think one of the things that happens very quickly is the change, that's the...
Change, well, change does happen quickly, it's about the only consistent thing that we know we have.
Well, when you intentional change, you know, right?
Yeah, well, when things are well laid out, when there's strong leadership, and there's strong strategy, and that you can, it's focused on customers, when you see those pieces, and, you know, it, it, you, it will take place quickly if it, if it's going effectively. Doesn't mean that change is an easy process, and, you know, any of these individual pieces up here can be a stumbling block. If you don't have strong leadership, none of the rest of the stuff happens. But you can have strong leadership, and still have struggles in some of these other areas. It's when all seven are really functioning together, is when the greatest amount of change happens, but to address your point, you know, you know, change can happen quickly. It, it really, it's how it's communicated, it's how there's buy-in to the process, and really, it also depends as much how you focus on all those individual areas, which can include workforce, so in our case, that would be teachers, and paraprofessionals, and food service workers, and everyone else that would be with them.
And of course, from my perception, that's always been a problem in the education field, is you, you witness a problem, and you know it needs to be changed, but it just takes forever to get the change made.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of the problem, you know, that it has to happen faster.
And we want to be intentional with it.
And be intentional, yeah.
Which is part of the reason why we're providing this, kind of this monthly report on how we're doing this, and again, this is gonna be a 12 to 18-month process, so this isn't something like, we can just snap our fingers and make this and go, there, you know, there's planning behind the scenes that takes place as well.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no other open period for patron comments. Peggy, can you put us into closed session? Sorry.
Motion. Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meeting, and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, and legal action, causes of action or litigation, 610.021. Okay. Larry?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes. All right. Peggy, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we will move to close, thank you.